Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of August tenth. We are coming out of closed session at seven hundred and two P M. And I have some items that I want to report of closed session. I should, before I do that, let me just explain for those who may not be familiar, we began our meeting this evening at six oh three P M. and within two minutes, we're in closed session. During that time, we have several things that are authorized to be handled in closed session. And so those are so indicated on the agenda, and those included some appointments, and that's what I'm about to share with you. Okay. So, the first item to report of closed session. The Board took action to appoint Stephanie Given, Principal Lakeview Elementary School effective August eleventh, twenty twenty one. The motion was by Mrs. Anderson and the second by Mrs. Blades, and it passed unanimously on a four zero vote. Item two, the Board took action to appoint Lindsay Fisher, Fisher, no, Fish and the Wellness Specialist effective August twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. The motion was by Mr. Youngblood, second by Mrs. Blades, it passed unanimously on a four zero vote. The third item, the Board took action to appoint Liliana Lopez, Wellness Specialist effective August twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mrs. Blades, second by Mrs. Anderson, it passed unanimously on a four zero vote. Fourth item, the Board took action to appoint Denise Villa, or Villa, Wellness Specialist effective August twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mrs. Anderson, second by Mr. Youngblood, it passed unanimously four oh. The fifth item, the Board took action to appoint Sarah Abdulhadi, Counselor effective August twelfth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mr. Youngblood and second by Mrs. Blades, passed on unanimously four zero vote. The sixth item, the Board took action to appoint Adriana Alcantara, Counselor effective August twelfth, twenty twenty one. It had, the motion was by Mrs. Blades, second by Mr. Youngblood, passed on unanimously four zero vote. Item seven, the Board took action to appoint Caleb Gray, Counselor effective August twelfth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mrs. Anderson, second by Mrs. Blades. The action was a unanimous vote of four oh to pass that appointment. Item eight, the Board took action to appoint Megan Kislin, Counselor effective August twelfth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mr. Youngblood, second by Mrs. Blades, it passed unanimously four zero. Item nine, the Board took action to appoint Christine Lamb, Counselor effective August twelfth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mrs. Anderson, second by Mrs. Blades, it passed unanimously four zero. Item ten, the Board took action to appoint Jennifer Morosick, Counselor effective August twelfth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mrs. Blades, second by Mrs. Anderson, it passed unanimously four zero. Item eleven, the Board took action to appoint Alicia Quintanilla, Counselor effective August twelfth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mr. Youngblood, second by Mrs. Blades, it passed unanimously four zero. Item twelve, the Board took action to appoint Sarah Haas, Mental Health Physician effective August twelfth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mrs. Blades, second by Mrs. Anderson, it passed unanimously four zero. And lastly, the Board took action to appoint Shodin Braviehan, Elementary Counselor on Special Assignment effective August twelfth, twenty twenty one. Motion by Mrs. Blades and second by Mr. Youngblood, it passed four zero unanimously. Okay. With that, I will call upon the clerk of our Board, Mrs. Anderson, to listen.
You all stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for listening. The roll call this evening will indicate for the purpose of our minutes that Board Member Mrs. Buck is not present this evening, and also our student Board Member Lord Fair is also not present this evening. Okay, we're in approval of the agenda. Take a motion of applause.
I'll make a motion to approve the August tenth, two thousand twenty one board vacation agenda as recommended by the Superintendent.
All right, I have a motion from Mrs. Blades, a second from Mrs. Anderson to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously four zero. Okay. The next item is an announcement about public comment. For those of you who may not always be present and would be familiar with how we handle this, I'll just do the highlights for you. There's quite a bit of information that is in the agenda. But first of all, there are forms, I have several already, that need to be filled out before I arrive at that point on the agenda, which will come up quite quickly, by the way. And those forms are available in the foyer, and then when you fill them out, please deliver them right over here if you wish, so that they can make their way up to me. Because when I do get to that point in the agenda, if I don't have it, I won't be accepting any more forms, and someone will need that. Second of all, I want to let you know that we, in our, the structure of our business meeting, which is what we're doing tonight, that we allow for thirty minutes to do public comment. And so normally, we would allow up to five minutes for someone to make comment, and then an additional five minutes if there's a need for language translation. However, since we have numerous, we will, as we have had to do, we will be reducing the speaking time for those who come forward. So start kind of thinking about how you want to organize your comments, since you will have less time than you might have planned. Also, if there are any accommodations that you need for any kind of a disability, please notify us ahead of time so that we can make those accommodations and plan without more notification, preferably for the dialysis work. Also, civility, we want to be sure we hear everyone's comments. So as people come up to the podium, I just want to be sure that others in the audience remain respectful, so we can hear everything they have to say. So with that, let's go on to our minutes from our last meeting. Any one have a motion?
I'll make a motion. That's, we recommend in the superintendent of schools that Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting for July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one.
I have a motion from Mr. Youngblood and a second from Mrs. Blades. Are there any additions or corrections in these five? I found something in the general functions, number three, on the lactation accommodations. So it's listed in there as, I made the motion, and Mrs. Buck made the second, and Mrs. Blake's. You may note that, thank you, that that working, so that when you five of us. Any others? All right, so with that and that question, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote, the motion has passed unanimously. I have all, hopefully all cards here, if not run now. Everyone's got it in, okay, thank you. All right, so we have twenty one speakers. I'm going to go ahead and have a minute and a half for everyone who comes forward. So when you come to the podium, please, if you would, observe that we do have. Wait for me. I haven't finished my sentence, so I'm going to, twenty two. All right, so, anyway, there will be a buzzer that will go off, so hopefully you've concluded before that. But if not, when that bell goes off, if you would, wrap it up right then. I don't want to have to interrupt anyone to ask them to do so. And I also will call three people at a time, just so you kind of know who's coming up. That way you can kind of be ready, and it'll kind of move us through this, so that we can be able to hopefully get this completed in a timeframe that allows this to continue the course of our meeting tonight. So, the first person speaking will be Liddana Gunbling, then Courtney McJox, and then followed by Emily Taylor. Okay, I'm never going to speak, or do I just start speaking?
Yes.
Okay.
First of all, thank you. Thank you for allowing us the voice and the freedom to be able to come up here and speak how we feel. I'd love that you guys listen to us and pray that you were willing to take our plea to the state, even though I understand the mask mandate is out of your control. I appreciate and thank you for at least listening and trying to help the people you represent. And since you did say you want to hear us, Ms. Freeman, you represent my area. And I want you to know, I think that there are some things you do very well. And I do not mean this as a criticism at all, but I want you to hear me very clearly. You represent my area. My area, the people I hang out with, my children, they're ready to give up their masks. No science supports it, and I want you to also be on the same page as those who are requesting the state to make this exemption. And as far as the ethnic studies go that we are speaking of, again, as my representative, I want you to understand, I do not want my children to think authority, law enforcement, are bad people. Every time we're in trouble, who do we call? They are not the enemy. There are bad people in every grouping and every situation. I agree, there are reforms needed in all areas, for sure. But I don't think we need to start targeting people and teaching our children who we like, who's a victim, who's the enemy. That's not okay. I understand my time's up, thank you, I appreciate it, and I'm glad that you listened.
Good evening, I wanted to thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns regarding the Newsela program. Sorry if I'm saying that incorrectly. Newsela has content that I'm not comfortable with my child reading by herself. I believe that many of the articles are inappropriate for students. Several of the articles I have seen offered by them are highly controversial topics and have no place in public school education. Our children are bombarded by several of these topics in social media, news, and on their favorite TV programs already. So let's use our school hours to focus on core fundamentals such as math, science, reading, music, art, and history. To me, this is not political, it's just common sense. Sensitive topics should be taught and discussed at home. Our family talks about many of the issues in our home. We do not want to shelter our child or raise her in a bubble. The goal is not to only expose her to what our family personally believes and agrees with. Having said that, we're very careful about how we word things and about what content we believe our daughter can understand and comprehend in a mature way. We teach respect, grace, and empathy. Many of the articles offered on Newsela's site are topics that we definitely want to talk to our daughter about, but that's just it. We want to talk to her about those topics in the safety of our home, where she can ask honest questions and we can give honest answers. Many of these articles touch on very personal and touchy subjects, and we want her to have the freedom to talk about those subjects in a safe place. I also think that many of the articles I have seen are not age appropriate for my daughter, and I believe many of them give a very one-sided story, take liberties with the truth, and glamorize events and subjects. I would ask you to please reconsider maybe using a different program.
Good evening, my name is Emily Taylor, and I come here as an elementary school teacher in our wonderful district, and also a parent of the incoming second grade daughter. I am here tonight to ask for the school district to allow mask choice to be put on the agenda. It is time our parents regain the ability to make the best choice for their children. As a teacher, I see a direct negative impact forced masking has had on our students. Seeing people speak is an essential building block of phonetic development, and facial expressions are fundamental to human connection, particularly for young children who are only learning how to signal happiness, confusion, and fear. Covering a child's face mutes these nonverbal forms of communication and result in robotic, emotionless interactions, anxiety, and depression. During this past school year, when the district finally lifted the mask mandate outside of school, it broke my heart to watch my students exit the classroom to go play at recess and remove their masks and say, I can finally breathe. It was tough to hear six-year-olds saying that. When I would pull my mask down to drink water, they would stare at me in awe, because they had no idea what I looked like. And it broke my heart. My own daughter, who's going into second grade, developed a bacterial infection on her face from wearing a mask. She's a rule follower and was scared to remove it even to drink water. When she would get in the car after school, she would guzzle a lot of water. She loves school, but is hesitant to go this year, even coming to mom's school. Please consider mask choice for our students and allow parents to make that choice.
Hi, everyone, my name is Shady Boone. I come as twofold here. I am a school district employee, and I love working in P Y L U S D. I also have two children, actually, one just graduated high school, and one is going to be a junior this year. I'm a speech therapist. If anyone knows how important it is to see someone's mouth, just standing right here. I work with preschoolers, try to teach them how to form sounds, produce words. It is so hard to do it with a mask on. I'm vaccinated, I'm double masked tonight, my kids are both vaccinated, and my son just got COVID. Because he was vaccinated, and we were told, you know, if you're vaccinated, you couldn't be without a mask. I get it, I was the first one to take mine off, going to the Trader Joe's, all the stores. And then he came home and he tested positive for COVID, and he swore he would have been on a ventilator had he not had a vaccine. His levels are horrible, he was horrible listening to him, coughing, and I just feel like that classroom is going to be a cesspool for spreading COVID. Again, I want to be without the mask when it's appropriate to do without the masks. But for me, I'm scared that it's going to just spread like wildfire in the classrooms. And so I ask that masks, that we continue to take science and what the public department can recommend for classrooms where there's a lot of children who either are or are not vaccinated, to stop this spread with COVID in our classrooms. Thank you.
I speak today as a mother. In June, we were all excited to be back on the fast track toward normal, when coronavirus took a sharp turn. Now we're dealing with a more contagious, faster-spreading new Delta variant of the virus. It has recently been reported that the highest rate of hospitalization from COVID is those ages thirty to fifty, fifty years old, who are unvaccinated. That would be the ages, oops, I'm sorry, that would be the ages of most of the parents in this room, and children also are getting sick and hospitalized. I'm seventy-five years old, I'm probably the oldest person in the room. I could be your mother, I could be your children's grandmother. As a mother, I'm intensely protective, I care deeply. So for, as a mom, just as a mom, I ask two things. One, I encourage you to get vaccinated. Health professionals agree, it's the best protection from COVID nineteen. And then number two, to the Board to enforce and for the community to support the state mask mandate if required. The best health practices that you had in, I'm sorry, I dropped my hands. The best health practices that you had in your schools last year kept, kept, kept safe last year, and they can again.
Good evening, my name is Linda Cohn. I taught high school for thirty-two years, I now teach three-year-olds in my church. I've read an awful lot of research. I commend you for giving parent choice if you can, and I do, do clearly support parent choice. Goodness, here is not the oldest lady in the room. I have at least four years on her. And I try to avoid wearing the mask whenever I can. I haven't had a mask on in two months. I'm here to speak on an entirely different issue, and all I have time to do is repeat five points that I was going to develop in detail. The issue is ethnic studies, specifically the ethnic studies model curriculum that is the Dean Faunto program or curriculum in A V one oh one. I have at least five concerns about this curriculum. I only have time to highlight them. First, the proponents of this curriculum constantly claim that a large body of research shows that ethnic studies has had a very positive impact on students. This research has been challenged and questioned in detail by several documents. I have the documents here, I'll leave them at the desk, as a misrepresentation of social science research and unsubstantial claims. I see my time is up, before we'll have to wait.
The next three, the first will be Michael Markless, followed by, I don't know, this one, Reba Romani, followed by Katie Chen.
Hi there, I'm here as a concerned parent, representing my wife and two kids, which are also here. Everybody keeps saying, let's go by the signs, so let's actually look at the signs. Ages zero through four, as of eight, as of the fourth of August, twenty twenty one, a hundred and twenty-eight deaths from COVID. From five to eighteen, two hundred and eighty-eight deaths. So that is, I'm not that good at math, but roughly four hundred. There are three hundred and thirty million Americans, so you have a one in one million chance of dying from this in that age group. And what I want to point out is most of those, if not all of those, were comorbid, where they had very serious comorbidities such as asthma, or even in a lot of cases, leukemia. So we're classifying any death, especially in that age group, as COVID, which is totally misclassified. And just for a little context, in twenty nineteen, which was the last time we actually called flu deaths, flu deaths, because we just misclassify every death as COVID now, we've got zero to four, two hundred and sixty-five deaths, and five to seventeen, they don't even include eighteen, because eighteen was, there's a lot there, two hundred and eleven. So then you have eighteen to forty-nine is two thousand four hundred and fifty. So for a little perspective, more people died in twenty nineteen in that age group from the flu than have died in the entirety of the pandemic, just to put that in perspective. And I'll just add one last thing, everyone here is unmasked. You have the choice to be unmasked, why are we masking our kids without a choice?
I'm Reba Romani, and I'm a student organizer, I did first primary, and I do all of this. While my fellow group members are likely to hear of you, or some testimony to recent reflections of color having faced any other discrimination, these harmful experiences are just a handful of hundreds, and we wish to shed light on the cases I have been traveling in our district for years on end. Our words are simply reflecting the voices of our students. To begin with, on Halloween Day, two cockmating girls showed up to school dressed as what they called seven-eleven workers. The title of this talking sounds harmless, but yet one student was wearing a turban, and one was wearing a vindi, which is the red dot that is worn between the eyebrows. And the entire culture was reduced and degraded down to stereotypical coal pottery. And yet no one did anything to educate these two girls on why this is wrong and why this is unacceptable. Another student recalls a separate encounter with women in this district. This student was shamed for being in their own, instantly viewed by their peers, ridiculed with their fake gagging and self-disgust. This happened so frequently, but this student threw away the lunch every time it was in Western view. The student was only in kindergarten, and they're already considering being different from their classmates. The first item we shared with you was from a student who was in the class of twenty twelve, and the second one is from a student who was in the class of two thousand and twenty-four. Racism has been present in this district for years, and is still a current issue that's since the fall of recent data changes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katie Chow, and I would like to share a testimony on behalf of my sister. She is a student at an elementary school in this district, and at this school, she has received or faced bullying, harassment, and racism. Her friends, who also happen to be people of color, received the same treatment from other classmates. My sister specifically was called, quote, "rice pepper," and was asked multiple times if she ate dogs or cats. Another classmate stretched their eyes to mock her, and on another occasion, a book about eating dogs was thrown at her. These stereotypes and normalized behaviors are perpetuated against her, and her ethnic identity was attacked and blatantly scrutinized. She reported her experiences to her teacher and principal, and after confronting the student about their actions, the principal told her, quote, "You know he's German, right?" As if to say that these actions were tolerable, or that this fact had somehow made the student susceptible to understanding the consequences and the impact of their behavior. My sister is only twelve. Thank you.
The next three individuals coming forward will be Becky Nguyen, Abigail Lee, and Barrett Elder.
Hello, my name is Becky Nguyen, and I will discuss the experience of an East Asian immigrant who arrived in the United States for the first time. This is her testimony. I was mocked for bringing Chinese food to lunch, to the point where I eventually started buying school lunch. I was told by a substitute teacher in some way to use my Americanized name instead of my Chinese name on the roaster, because it was difficult for her to pronounce. Elementary classmates said "Ching Chong" to my face, slanted their eyes at me, asked me if I ate dogs, and despite all these things, would always turn to me to beg for homework answers. All these racist incidents that have happened in the span of less than six years in the P Y L U S D district that will continue in the future if no action is taken. Through student perspectives, it has shown that racial discrimination is extremely common. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abigail Lee. I would like to say that although not everyone in this district is a perpetrator, turning a blind eye to the mistreatment that has happened to our students for years has, has, has been enabling people to hurt innocent students in P Y L U S D. There is proof that racism in our district is real, and is crucial to knowledge its existence in order to even start taking action. The testimonies we have presented recorded today simply portray a fraction of the discrimination that has hurt students extensively or by individuals. Ignoring the problem simply because you may not have experienced it firsthand is only going to enable the mistreatment of students in this district. We are not only speaking for ourselves, but hundreds of students who will not stand for this to be fair. Our mission is not to push an agenda, we are simply asking for you to listen and provide us with the support we need. That's because we truly believe that if you just take a moment to empathize with our experiences, change is most definitely possible. Thank you.
Is Barrett Elder here? Is there anyone in the foyer that we're not aware of? I think everyone made it in the room, so, Barrett Elder? Barrett Elder? Okay, I'm gonna put him on. The next individuals to come forth will be Sharon Calmacky, followed by Mrs. G, followed by Nathaniel Snyder.
Hi there. I have four kids. One of them, we actually dropped off at college today for the first time. She's a graduate or is a graduate of P Y L U S D. And as my husband and I said goodbye to her, you know, I'm looking at her and she's solid, she's ready, she's confident. And she had great education, she had great mentors. And as I was driving back here, I was thinking to myself, what did she not have? What's different? And you know what she didn't have? That eighth and ninth grade sex ed that we all have now in our schools. And she didn't have these ridiculous assemblies. They actually shot off rockets and learned about science when she was younger. They didn't have sensitive news articles on these fifty-six-thousand-dollar programs we call Newsy L.A. And she certainly didn't have slideshows, elaborate ones, in middle school damning our police community. But I can assure you, she's not racist. And I can assure you, she knows about the birds and the bees. And I can show you that she has a very high level of respect for our police community, and I'm grateful for that. But I have three other kids that I'm clearly worried about, and that's why I'm here every single month. These three new school board members, you know, they ran on campaigns about family first and academic first. And we all worked really hard to get you all into these spots. And I'm asking you to please, please stay committed to what you said you were going to do and get rid of these ridiculous programs. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me tonight. As I have spoke to you, I'll say sir, back and forth today about who would pay the fine and how much the fine would be. So I've been told it's been a thousand-dollar fine if we send our kids to school if our district defies those orders. Who, and it hasn't been cleared yet, yet. If it'll be a thousand-dollar fine, a reoccurring fine or one-time fine and possible jail time. Who does that jail time? He says he's not quite sure yet. It may be him since he's the head person of our district. I think all of us in this room, just about, would be willing to pay that thousand dollars fine. Even if it was daily, I don't know, monthly, yearly, one-time fee, I don't know. I said most, not all, thank you.
I'll pay for them.
Yeah. So you know what? We need to figure this out. We need to get it on our agenda. And we need to have parents' choice for a mask or no mask. I'm tired of playing ping-pong with Dr. Chow and with Doe that's telling me to come back to you guys, our superintendent. It's enough. These kids are dying. These kids are literally dying at home. They cannot go back to school with masks again. I will not send my kid back. But you know what? My children do want to go back. And it breaks my heart. It's, last night, my daughter told me, Mom, I will get the shot now if it means I can just go back to school and be normal again. This is enough, you guys. I cannot take it anymore. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Nathaniel Snyder. I'm here representing my wife Erica and our two kids, first grader and third grader. And we have moved into your neighborhood just recently. And I've heard great things about this district and the education that you provide for students. Thank you so much. What you do is not easy. What you teachers do is not easy. Parents, thank you so much for being here. Continue to be a voice because this is where change happens. But I do want to say that my wife and I are on the fence if our kids are going to go to your Belinda Travis Ranch School, which again, I've heard great things about, or continue to stay in private education. One of those things is the masks that are being required. And I would propose that we consider the mask a choice by parents. I am a pastor in the area. And I have seen hundreds of kids come through our ministries where we allow the choice for the mask to be worn or not to be worn. And the signs that I have seen, I have not seen an outbreak. And so I consider, or I would hope that we consider to allow our parents to make that choice for the kids. I do know that there are kids in the middle school age that have worn masks for a year and now are finding it more comfortable to keep the mask on versus the sip that's on their face. We all had a difficult time going through puberty, I can attest to that. We didn't have to deal with masks on our face. And now finding it easier to keep those on versus the reality that someone is faced with just being who God has created us to be. So please consider the freedom of choice for our kids to wear their mask or not to. Thank you.
The next individuals coming forward will be Kristen Mortonstein, Amber Griffin, Curtis McCaffrey.
Hi, my name is Kristen. I have two students in the district. And like somebody previously said, we all have a choice right now. We're in a room very close together, not wearing masks, many of us. Why are we going to make our children do that? I want to tell you about my son. He's an honor roll student. He's afraid to get in trouble. He complies with everything. He's embarrassed to go outside of the norm. I'm really concerned about him with the mask though. He has a medical exemption, which he didn't use last year because he was embarrassed. He has fainting migraines, which lead to vomiting. One day in school, just a couple of years ago, he fell out of his chair, scraped his whole face up. They had to call the ambulance. I got there before them, so I was able to take him. But he doesn't know when these episodes are going to come on. So he can't prevent them. But restricting somebody's breathing when they're going to faint is not okay. It's not appropriate. And even if he feels that he's getting a headache, he doesn't know how bad he's going to be. He's going to be embarrassed being singled out. I'm going to have to take out this mask, I'm going to say something. He would let himself faint. Who's liable when that happens? You guys need to make a choice. And I, why is it not even on the agenda tonight? You need to make a choice to make this optional or tell the teachers, don't enforce it. Yes, it's our rule, we have to have masks, but don't enforce it. What about the five-year-old that thinks that they're going to get kicked out of school because they don't have their mask on? And they've got like sores all over their face, which was happening. And they're getting depressed and not learning and not able to see their peers and their teachers and have that emotional connect. So you need to be clear with the teachers and the parents about enforcement and it being optional. Again, who's liable when my son faints next time?
Hello, good evening. First, I'd like to thank the three board members that were representing the parents who spoke at the last meeting and then sent a request to the U S D Board of Education, who unanimously voted to challenge Newsom over this ridiculous child mask mandate. But that brings me to tonight, where we, the parents, want to know where that leaves us. The board has voted agreeing that parents should have a choice whether the kids wear a mask or not. And so we want to know what that means when school starts. The state left the enforcement up to individual school districts and we, as parents, want to know what that will look like. There are many families who do not want to see their kids in masks and some are considering leaving if that is the case. When at least fifty or more students show up without a mask every single day to every site in our district, will that be okay? Will this be a recommendation or a mandate? Can we sign a waiver releasing our students from having to wear them? And if not, they cannot be suspended under the school ed code of four-eight-nine-hundred as long as they are respectful when they are being defiantly refusing to wear a mask. They will have to remain in school. They have to get the proper education that they deserve. So we just want to know where we're at, where it stands. And lastly, I just also want to take a quick moment, since my timer hasn't caught off yet, and say that we also are planning on challenging the critical race theory and ethnic studies that are coming in. Most of us do not agree that any of those articles, not any of those, most of those articles on there are definitely not school-appropriate. They should be left for the home and continue working on focusing on basic education, math, science, reading, writing, the basics.
I think that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, President, Chairman, and Superintendent for carrying us out tonight. The plural mandate is not data. I am nonetheless going to share with you that there is a fourteen-year-old boy in Orange County right now who is struggling after a month later after having COVID with the side effects of COVID that have led him to have hallucinations and psychotic episodes. There are side effects to getting COVID that are not dying. You should not just ask yourself, are people going to die? COVID is very, very dangerous. The Delta variant is very dangerous. I have here printed out with me tonight, but do not have time to read, Kristen Bain, who is an M D at the University of Medicine, University of Arizona College of Medicine in the Medical Medicine Department. For eighteen months, she's gone through a strict decontamination procedure every night after leaving the hospital to return to her family. After three days in an Arizona school district that did not require masks for some part COVID. Eighteen months following the rules versus three days just recently here in August. That's actually not what I want to talk about here tonight. In my remaining twenty seconds, I want to throw my support behind the idea of ethnic studies here. We've heard stories from students who, as they were talking about the Mendi, the dot that Hindus have. When I asked questions about this in college, my friend who had a Mendi, she told me about Mendi. And she told me about this amazing lore and world that she was able to inhabit growing up. And that's exactly the kind of history that we want taught in schools.
Followed by the remaining four. We'll begin with Diane Cami, followed by Stephanie Maurer, followed by Sue Ballas, and followed by Sadia Monem.
Good evening, board members. My name is Diane Cami. I'm a fourteen-year resident of P Y L U S D. I live in the Travis Ranch attendance area. I came here, it seems like we're all talking about masks, so what you need to know is that I'm a scientist by training. And I follow the science. It isn't just about death. It's about, it isn't just about me. It's about you. It's about transmitting the virus to other people. That's the reason for wearing a mask. It's not just for you. It's to protect the other people in the classroom and the room. And that's why I still wear one, because I have an immune-compromised person in my home. So even though I'm vaccinated. I didn't come here to talk about masks. I came here to talk about early graduation from the P Y L U S D. I have three children, the last just graduated from college. That last student, all of my students were in the gifted intelligent program when they were here in P Y L U S D. But at various times, I pulled all of my children, all three of them, out of P Y L U S D to a private school. And my last one would be the example of that. What I'm advocating for here is that you decide what are, what does a person need to know? Not what courses do they need to take? What do they need to know before they graduate from the school? I'll come back another day and talk more about what I believe on this, okay? But I think you need to be thinking about what is it that they need to know. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Maurer. I have three daughters in this district. And this needs to become a mask of choice. I've had enough of this, that it's about everyone else. You're afraid of catching COVID. You're worried about your family members. And you put that mask on and stop making it so my children cannot breathe. I have an older daughter who came home every day with migraines and hardly could do her homework because she was so stuck breathing in that mask and tired of it. I had another daughter that I found out wasn't wearing her glasses all year because they kept fogging up regardless of what foggy solution, so she couldn't see. I've had enough of this, this is time for a choice. Parents get to choose, yes or no. If you're afraid of your kid catching COVID and don't want to run him, then we have great options. We have Buena Vista, we have other options for you. And this needs to stop because this is not fair to our children. They are not learning properly and enough is enough.
Good evening. And I'm asking this question because there's a lot of vaccinated people out there that are getting sick and they're not realizing that they're getting sick because of vaccine. So I have a question. And I will take, I need an answer, but if you don't answer, I'll just take that as a yes. It's a new world, right? So, here you go. Do you have the authority? I'm not asking you if you're going to be doing this. I'm asking you, do you have the authority to do pop-up clinics at the schools and vaccinate our children? You do, don't you?
I am going to state, because I fail to notify, because there are some that would be aware. We do not address and comment back to those hurting. If there is something that's posed as a question, which you've done, someone from staff will get with you.
Okay, great. But think about that. They've hired all of these health people. What are they for? Either to take care of the masked children who are going through hyperventilation or to do a pop-up clinic to vaccinate your kids. Think about it.
Is it with consent also?
You know what? Children have their own consent. I'm from high school. In fact, this district hired me at one point. And I left, but.
You're not who I am.
But I'm somebody that you do know. Anyway, I'm not going to tell everybody.
Amen.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Sadia Monem. I'm a clinical medicine hospitalist and I've been working on the front lines to the public patients since March twenty-first. And I also have two daughters that go to Presidential Belinda District School. And they're unvaccinated because they're under twelve years old. Because I'm sure you already know that Delta variant is on the rise. Right now, we're starting to see more cases again in the hospital while three months ago, I had nothing. And things had been really good. But now, we are starting to open up our COVID wards again. And I have absolutely zero reason to lie about anything because I have had to go down every single day and come home, decontaminate, take a shower, protect my kids. So the cases, pediatric hospitalizations across the country are about three hundred a day, which is the highest since the pandemic. I have been intense with my pediatric colleagues and hearing about young, especially one-month-old, eleven-year-old kids having to be on the ventilator and with no previous comorbidities. I understand we talk about death as an outcome, but even if somebody has a comorbidity, doesn't mean they deserve to die. And that we are going to take on masks and make them COVID. Unfortunately, actually, sorry, my time's up. But if I can have a puzzle one minute.
I'm sorry, my time's up.
Organize it. So we do not allow any different amount of treatment. So, thank you.
As are the board trustees and executive cabinet members. Last week was an exciting one as we welcomed back all of our principals following their celebrations. District administrators, principals, assistant principals coming together to reconnect and discuss the new school year, which begins on Tuesday, August thirty first. As we look ahead, the theme of our 2021 and 2022 school year is rebound, reignite, reestablish, which speaks to the focus that people have on ensuring that students rebound from the events of the past eighteen months while reigniting and reestablishing their love of learning. All of our staff members will play a crucial role in making this year a success. But in particular, our teachers will be charged with navigating the unique academic challenges that may lay ahead for students. So as we work on how we will be rebounding, reigniting, and reestablishing, it is important that our teachers feel completely prepared to enter the new year. It is around that concept that our 2021 Early Bird Professional Development opportunity was created. Beginning next Monday, August sixteenth, teachers across the district will have the opportunity to participate in online professional development sessions appropriate for all grade levels in content areas from kindergarten through twelfth grade. Many of these sessions are hosted by our very own outstanding PYL UST classroom teachers. The full course catalog has already been shared with teachers. We look forward to picking up Early Bird PD the PYL way next week. I want to thank our entire educational services department and leadership of Dr. Anderson for their efforts in this area. As I foreshadowed earlier, the start of the new school year is right around the corner, and our staff continues to plan for the arrival of our students and staff members. We look forward to resuming a traditional full-time on-campus learning model while continuing to follow all guidance as set forth by the California Department of Health and the Orange County Health Defense Agency. More details about next school year will be shared with staff and families in the coming weeks. We appreciate our entire community's ongoing partnership as we continue to review and implement ever-changing state and local guidance in time for the new year. That's my report.
Thank you very much. All right, well, we're at consent calendar. Okay, so we have twenty-nine items for the consent calendar. These are all items that are deemed routine and nature. We do have the information, we have the twenty, because they have a whole agenda ahead of time. And we've come prepared to vote on this as a blog. However, if there's anything that anyone wishes to hand separately, it can be held at this time. Does anyone have anything to add to that? Okay, then I will take the motion to approve the consent calendar. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Second, thank you. I have a motion from Mrs. Anderson and a second from Mrs. Blades. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion has passed unanimously for a zero. Okay. Now we're to general functions. So first, if I may, on either one, I would like a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-one dash zero six, Constitution Day Education Program.
Thank you. Motion from Mr. Anderson, second from Mrs. Blades.
Thank you so much, and good evening, President Freeman, trustees, superintendent Alsessa, executive cabinet, and community members. It is my occasion to bring the fore you for your approval this evening, resolution number twenty-one oh six, entitled Constitution Day Education Program. Both federal and state laws require districts to hold commemorative exercises for US Constitution Day each year on or near September seventeenth. The requirements include the offering of educational programs and lessons for all students in grades K through twelve that contain specifically to the teachings of the United States Constitution. This year, on September seventeenth, Presenterio Melinda Unified School District Schools will offer activities and instruction that cover the purpose, the meaning, and importance of the Constitution of the United States while also instilling a sense of pride amongst our students and our country. Examples of these activities may include, but are not limited to, postal contests, student announcements, discussion, social science classes, skits, essay contests, and parade appropriate lessons. Thank you once again for your consideration of this resolution. Do you have any questions or suggestions?
Anything I was gonna add, because this resolution is done annually, is at the very bottom, where the out there form, the resolve section, September seventeenth. I just think we should add one here. Okay, good. All right, that one is issued into there. Let's go ahead and take our vote on this item for this resolution. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion has passed unanimously. Moving on to the second item, I will let down the motion first. I'll make a motion for this revised board policy six one four one point five, independent study, second reading.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Mrs. Anderson and a second from Mr. Anderson.
Thank you once again. For the TK through grade twelve education budget trailer, SB one thirty, which was released on July sixth, twenty twenty-one, includes significant changes to independent study requiring that all school agencies revise their adopter board policies for independent study and to rewrite any existing student parent written agreements within thirty days of the state of the starting instruction. All is a means to incorporate the changes in law for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. As part of the new requirements, all PYL parents and guardians were notified of their options via an email that went out yesterday, August ninth, ensuring we are in compliance with informing families in writing prior to the start of the school year. SB one thirty authorizes independent study for any people whose health would be put at risk by in-person instruction as determined by the parent or guardian, which essentially adds medical concerns to the list of reasons why students may opt for a remote instruction plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The new provisions for independent study could also be preferable for students who are too young to be vaccinated or students with other exceptional circumstances, such as traveling athletes, for example. After hearing the board's suggestions from our previous meeting and our first second review of the available content and resources, we have proposed a few additional revisions for your review this evening, allowing us to bring a final draft forward for your approval at September's board meeting. Thank you for your consideration of tonight's policy changes. Do you have any questions or suggestions?
I have a couple, I have a question, but let's just start with easy stuff like the changes. Start basic. So on paragraph nine, which is on page sixty-five, basically the third paragraph at the bottom, it reads, "South factory educational quarters is determined based on a people's achievement and engagement, completion of assignments, learning required concepts, and progressing towards completion of the course of study or specific course." And I was just wondering why achievement and engagement were combined? Can we just make it a comment, a comma? Separate it instead of...
Read, space, achievement, comma, engagement.
Completion of assignments, comma, learning required concepts, and progressing towards completion. Yes, that sounds good. Did you have additional questions? Yeah, I have an additional question. With all the revised segments, I noticed that there's a lot of wording in here that goes, you know, like if you were in comprehensive or traditional, and then you went to independent study, and then returning independent study back to comprehensive. And I noticed in the second paragraph, it, page sixty-four, it talks about how students in a traditional independent study wishing to return to a regular classroom instruction transition from the independent study school to comprehensive school within five days. But it doesn't give the opposite, the same privileges.
And that is exactly, you know, there is no wording, and we looked through the bill that actually indicates, you know, the amount of time that should occur when the opposite request is being asked. And I think just, you know, our commitment would obviously be if it's prior to the beginning of the school year, we would make sure that we, you know, are able to accommodate that request before the school year begins so we can start the student at the independent school of choice. And then if it is during the year, you know, really, it's, you know, really would be something that we would accommodate as, you know, to the greatest extent possible within the smallest amount of time. But the bill itself does not state any time limit for that.
But it doesn't preclude us from adding a time limit so that it's fair going forward. Is that correct?
Absolutely, we can put in that language, I see what you're going with that, absolutely.
I'm just trying to make it, you know, if you want to go one way or go the other way, I just feel like it should be on a even, like, field. And that's, since we're gonna see this a third time, and we're trying to look, be sure there's nothing in the bill that precludes it. Right. Yeah, as long as there's something in the law that says that you can't do it, I would think that would be good. Look into it, and we'll see what's in it. Because even though typically we do two readings, we can do multiple readings. Well, this version is way different. Well, it really did bump it up from the last version we saw in our last meeting. And that's because the, that language was a little too...
Exactly, we didn't have the resources and at our disposal when we, you know, wrote the first versions of this. Absolutely. We will explore that language as we...
Okay.
We have these two issues, the comma, and then the second paragraph, anything else that you want to...
No, I just was saying too, at the last meeting, I brought up, and Mrs. Freeman also brought up, you know, the... And it's back in. And it's back in now. So, yeah, we're, I'm, I'm just wanting to say that, thank you. And I also noticed, I think it's paragraph seven through ten, they kind of do the clear statement, and there's a lot more to tell, so thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you for the input, that was very helpful.
Okay. Well, what we have in place is a revision, it's not the final adoption. So what we're going to be moving forward with on a vote right now would be just, we have a separate reading. We're still revising, and it may look a little different here on the third reading, so we'll see. Okay, so any other questions? I won't be turning this anyone's question over. Okay, let's go ahead and then take a vote on this second item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion has passed unanimously for a zero. Okay, next item, if I may have a motion, the second.
I think the mission's about forty policy four zero three-three, lactation accommodation secondary.
I'll second. Thank you. I have a motion from Mrs. Blades, a second by Mrs. Anderson. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, President Freeman. It's my pleasure to introduce Human Resources Director Nancy Blake to electric to present the second reading of proposed board policy four zero three-three.
President Freeman, members of the board, superintendent Alsessa, and executive cabinet. Included on the agenda tonight is a proposed recommendation to adopt board policy four oh three-three, lactation accommodation secondary. Pursuant to Labor Code ten thirty-four, as added by SB one forty-two, districts are mandated to develop policy regarding lactation accommodations, which include a break time, a private and readily available location, and the opportunity for an employee to have lactation accommodations without discrimination or retaliation. When presented at the July twenty-seventh board meeting, there were no suggested changes to the first reading. The second reading on the agenda tonight affords the board the opportunity to adopt the proposed board policy four oh three-three, lactation accommodation. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? All right, yes, as I noticed, there is no change since we saw last week. All right, with that, let's go ahead and take our vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion has passed unanimously for a zero. Okay, now we go on to board information, and that is our fourth interim fourth quarter financial report. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Giordano.
Thank you. Tonight, we're presenting the twenty twenty-one fourth quarter financial report. And this report includes cash balances for the past three years. And page two of that report illustrates those balances in geographic form. Our district is not anticipating the need for any temporary margins in the near term, although our fiscal services team will continue to monitor cash flow needs for any changes in those requirements. Pages three and four of the report include cash balances in all funds excluding ASPs of approximately one hundred seventy-eight point three million. Pages five through seven of the report provides an accounting of our ASP cash on hand as well as the balance activity in those accounts. It also includes the Orange County Treasury Report for the month ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and a note that the current net yield deposits in the Orange County investment pool is running point seven seven percent. And that concludes the twenty twenty-one fourth quarter investment report.
Are there questions? I have a question. On page three, it talks about the workman's comp trust with the interest of forty-five thousand of the balance, and that is replenished, and it's an up to balance. Is there a minimum balance that that account can't fall below?
It's a good question. There is no minimum account balance that can't fall below. We like to keep it up as high, as closely as possible to that impressed level or that pressed balance of forty-five thousand. We never want to get down to a point where we expend funds and we don't have that revolving fund to make payment. So our team replenishes that pretty much on a weekly basis. And so we always try to keep it as close to that forty-five thousand dollar balance as possible.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much. I always, I think we all, let's take a look at the, the status of ASP funds and just, and of course, now that we get back to what we hopefully much more likely expect schools to be in terms of how they operate, things will start changing, of course, in that area. But thank you, and again, thank you for the forward information, early information, of course, reminding us of why there's that larger balance in the ASP. What's going on there? Thank you. Okay, it's communications time, which is the opportunity for us to share things that we've done at the schools or for school activities or professional development at schools, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll start with Mr. Anderson, if that's okay.
Of course.
Of course.
As far as any professional development, looking forward to some conferences that will be coming up here this, this, end of this month and beginning of next month. Some educational type conferences that will give me a little more heads up of how to do this job. I did mention, however, in the last meeting in regards to cameras in the classrooms and so forth, and I've been given a lot of information regarding that, mostly some of the education law, something, something called FERPA law. I don't know if any of you guys know it, but it's the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. So there's some things I have to kind of navigate through in order to look at, if it is even possible to do in our district. So I'm continuing to, to look for that. I do appreciate the emails in which you guys are sending, sending me regarding any of these things. And we're covering a lot of topics, including mass choice and the curriculum and so forth. And guys, this is gonna be a continuous battle for us. So be prepared to, you know, do the long haul on this. Educate yourselves. Don't be afraid to ask questions in which it seems like a lot of people are definitely being more bold in doing so. You know, we, we want to get through this, we want to get through it together, and mostly with parents having the choice of what is right for their child. So we're gonna continue to do our due diligence. Please continue to, to bear with us and, and give us information and just things in which you guys are seeing up there as well that can help us better prepare our kids for education. Because this is really what it's all about, is to get these kids educated properly, okay? All of the social issues, all, we're not training advocates up here for our kids. We're not training them to be advocates for whatever. We want them to be educated and citizens, good citizens for this country, and to succeed mostly. Thank you, thank you. Continue, be good work, parents. That's all.
So, it kind of comes in in the summer, and it's kind of a bummer, but it's also super exciting because I think kids are, you know, getting... because I think kids are, you know, getting ready to go back to school, looking forward to like the fall activities. I'm really excited that we're having middle school sports again. And so that's something for a middle schooler to look forward to. I'm just going to hit on a few points. Once again, I would like to look into the lights at El Dorado and I think that that would be an amazing thing for El Dorado High School. I can't imagine not attending a high school and a football field that doesn't have lights and I think that's something the El Dorado community would really like. It would impact so many of their sports programs, their band program, I mean, it just would open up a whole new world for, for El Dorado High School, so I'd like to continue to look into that. The New Zealand, New Zealand LA was very controversial and people brought it up, so I also did some more digging and what some teachers have told me is the alternative to that has been a program called Read Works. So I was also wondering if we should possibly look into that as a substitute if maybe, if we decide to go another route either now or in the future. I've also had some parents come forward and ask that we look into a sex ed curriculum and it's called HART. And I also wanted everyone to know that on the consent calendar, we approved two small resource police officers because PYL USD backs, well, I back the vote. And then so I have, I wrote this out because it's kind of a little emotional for me, so I was just, kind of some of my thoughts and so I didn't want to, it's just better sometimes if I write it out to get my point across. So this is my prepared version. Although Officer Ella French is not an employee of PYL USD or associated with us, it is important we take a moment to pause and hold a moment of silence for her. In reflecting about the many emails and phone calls I've received over the last few weeks and months, the same trend persists, persists whether the person speaking to me was for or against the issues, we discussed her like math, ethnic studies, critical race theory. We have reached a point in our society where you have to take sides. It's hard, it's hard to believe we have come to a point where you have to choose side with a race or police. I can stand here today and say that all lives do matter. People matter and should never be at the expense of others. This rhetoric and the actions behind it needs to stop. Today, in honor of fallen fellow officer, I want to stand together. As a former police officer and mother, I can't help but sob to think that because of the division in our society that a little girl will grow up without her mother. I know full well her school system will be tasked with picking up so many broken and missing people, so I'd like to close tonight in her honor and ask our community to make the commitments work together and not let these issues divide us. We are losing focus on what matters most, our kids. We need to make the commitment to honor our kids' voices and find ways to do so without it being at the expense of others. We need to find ways to ensure our students receive the highest quality education while being welcomed in our schools, respected and embraced for who they are, even when they have difficult moments. So much that we discuss revolves around very adult problems and at this time we are not doing a good job. In our adult world, we continue to see division in the headlines, which often follows with someone dying. So in honor of Ella French, who's two months old, I want us to remember the responsibility we have to serve our kids. No more division. Tonight's call to action is to first acknowledge that we are a community that is divided on issues. Now that we have identified our current reality, we have to make the commitment to ensure that we stay focused on our students' needs. I want to ask, as we disagree about these issues, that we are mindful about how we speak to one another and about one another. I have heard since the time I took office, the need to give a voice to our students of color, support mental health, provide a more representative curriculum, and to give freedom such as activities and peer interaction to our kids. This board, in spite of what PYL headlines may say, is working actively on this. If we are going to move forward in our work, we need to stop this battling. There's not much more at this point that can be said. Now we need to allow our district office to take this feedback that we heard tonight and that we've been hearing for the past few months and put it into action according to the guidelines that have been given by the state and federal laws. As a public community, our spirit needs to shift for the purpose of our kids. Let's allow our district time and space to put together timelines, resources, and information that will help better inform us on how the students' needs are being met, not the adult agenda. And I, I had to write that because I was, it really hit me hard this weekend because I remember specifically when my oldest was two months old, I remember putting on my, my vests and having to go out in the field that night and wondering if I was going to come home and if I'd ever hold my baby again and who would raise my kid. So seeing what's happening to our police officers going on out there, it, it just broke my heart, actually did kind of break down a little bit. For this mom, because that's probably, her last thought was probably her baby that was at home. So if we can, and if I could get the board majority, I would love to end, even though she's not representing PYL USD, just because she's a law enforcement officer, she's a mom, to end in her honor tonight. Thank you.
Hello, I don't have very much to speak on tonight as we just met two weeks ago, but since our last meeting, I watched the OC with Liberty and Justice for All that the OC Department of Ed put on regarding ethnic studies and critical race theory and then I've also started watching the forum on ethnic studies from the Orange County Board of Education halfway through and I just, I think there's a lot of interest in ethnic studies and critical race theory and the Board of Education is putting on another forum on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, six P M. And it will, you can go and watch it in person and then it also will be streamed and there's more information on their website and it's listed, if you go there, it's under special meetings, because it took me a little bit to find it, so I thought I'd just give you a little heads up on that. And then I'm looking forward to the leadership symposium this Thursday and starting to see the, the wheels turn for school district.
Okay, well, mine is also very abbreviated because there hasn't been that very much happening yet. I was at the Back to School in Service last Thursday for ROP and so just like we can do here, if we're all vaccinated, it's not an education environment because students aren't here, so that's why we're going to have masks as long as we do our sub-antastation and some other masks, which they can do if they weren't vaccinated or choose to, or some do. I have some friends who still have chlamydia, so who are family members who wore their masks that day. But the Back to School in Service is great. Coincidentally, the two curriculum coordinators are recently out of our schools. One from, I guess, from a ROP teacher is now a curriculum coordinator and then another teacher with ROP at Valencia. So it was really kind of fun for me to sit there after we had the morning program and then see the two of them watching to, going through for all five districts and what they need to do. We have, just like here, we have a lot of new instructors in ROP and just like here, they're coming from all over. It's really kind of fun because again, it just brings new ideas, fresh energy, like that. So that was a really good day and our theme was the seventies, which everyone really bought into, so that was fun. It was the entertainment just to come in the door, you know, and see everyone and what they decided to wear. As you say, our management symposium is coming up day after tomorrow, I look forward to that because it was, once again, it's been a long time since we've really been able to do that, but as we move a little further ahead, we are being so cautiously and we've been ready to do it in another state. Also, just, just for help for those who might not know, when we're elected to the board, we're elected by areas. I'm on the county committee, which I've been on for many years and we went through that whole process with nearly every school district, including our community colleges, but, and that's transitioning from being elected at large to being elected by areas. But I just want to, I want to be understood clearly that whereas we're elected by areas, we represent when we come in here as elected, we represent every school. And so our charge is not just those in our, our area from where we're elected, it's from, it's to be responsible and attentive to all students throughout the whole district. So we have that responsibility and I, I just want that to be perhaps among our priorities so that, that we, we don't, we don't look just at a part of our population. Our charge is to be lawful for everyone and not step on our students, our students first and foremost. So I just want to share that with you since that's something that I've been going through with, it's a committee of eleven at county level, we need the district, the county board, and then we go to each district as they go through it. We came here when we went through that change to area elections, but I just want to have that be clear, we, we have to look out for everyone and we should, that's, that's important. So with that, I will go forward with the adjournment. Yes, and I, I will say that it is not our common place to do other than those connected to the school district. Also, as I understand, this is a person, you know, sadly, that has gone through this in another state. Today, we lost another fireman, I know we have people here, my son, there's a best fireman when he goes out of his room. So I understand the importance, but yet our tradition has been that we, we do this action on behalf of those that are part of the district. And so I'll just say that again because we have these people, but I will entertain whatever motion or request comes to me, so please.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn in memory of Officer Ella French, your public department.
One second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Blades and a second from Mr. Youngblood. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned at eight twenty-three. That is really nice. Thank you all for being here this evening, looking forward to seeing you in the future. I'm seeing very beautiful faces tonight.